Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju wache ya kwe kwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we will officially call to order. Mr Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Mayor Patterson, there's quorum.
Okay, nothing from Committee of the Whole, closed meeting. Next, we will have approval of the addits. Could I get a copy of the addits, please? That's great, thank you. So, we just have a motion of congratulations and a motion of condolence to add. Can I get a mover, please? Moved by Councillor Neil, seconded by Councillor O'Sannick. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we have no presentations, we have no delegations, we have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, we will move to the motions on the addits. A motion of congratulations, moved by Councillor Neil, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Kingston Frontenac Public Library and staff for having been awarded the Ministry of Culture, Tourism and Sport Angus Moat Award at the annual Ontario Library Association Super Conference. Budget leads were Liz Coates and Kimberley Sutherland Mills. MPP Sophie Kowala, Parliamentary Assistant to the Minister, presented the award on behalf of the Minister. Motion of condolence, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Bohm, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Denis Leger, Commissioner, Transportation Facilities and Emergency Services, and his partner Kim Ball, Administrative Assistant, Human Resources and Organisation Development, on the passing of his father, Paul Leger, on January 25th, 2016, and grandfather to Rene Leger, financial analyst. Our thoughts are with their family during this difficult time. We will call the vote. And that carries. We have no deferred motions tonight, so I will ask for Report 25 from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor Hutchison, seconded by Councillor Shell, that Report Number 25 from the Chief of Ministry of Officer Consent be received and adopted.
So, there are three items, A, B, and I guess that should be C. Would anyone like any of the items separated? Councillor Neil. Okay. Councillor Hutchison. Okay, so we will deal with them one at a time. That leaves nothing. All right, so first, item A, amendments to consultant contract for official plan update and comprehensive zoning bylaw project. Councillor Neil.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and then potentially a couple of amendments that I've shared with the clerk already. It's my understanding that the third draft OP will still be scheduled to come to the planning committee with an opportunity for public input, but there's also the February 23rd special council meeting to deal with the OP. Is that accurate?
Mr Hurdle.
Through you, Mr Mayor, that is correct. There is the special meeting of council on February 23rd, and the additional public meeting for the official plan will actually take place in April. I believe I might have said March earlier, but I correct that, it's April.
Okay, and on the 23rd, the public will have a full opportunity to make comments and ask questions, so it won't be like a usual bylaw one governed special council meeting, but the public will have an opportunity to speak to it?
Mr Newman.
Through you, Mayor Patterson, yes, that's correct. So, it will be an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any revisions to the official plan that they think are necessary as part of the ongoing update.
Thank you. And I'm very interested in the corridors concept that's being brought forward. I guess my concern, one of the things that the consultants already commented on from what input they've received from the community, is that the city needs to find a better way to define stable neighbourhoods and neighbourhoods in transition. In the past, that's been a term that's been used, but without a lot of clarity, what is a stable neighbourhood, what is a neighbourhood in transition? Will that be something that will be addressed with this scope of work that's being proposed?
Mr Newman.
Through you, Mayor Patterson, yes. So, the whole concept of a nodes and corridors study is to actually take the effort and delineate what the city believes to be a stable area versus an area in transition. And so, coming out of the nodes and corridors piece will be some clearer direction as to what the city defines as an identifiable area in transition, an area that the city would like to use to support and direct growth. And by virtue of defining those areas within a node or corridor, you identify areas that are considered to be stable and are not, the areas that are targeted for growth and intensification.
Great, thank you. I did share with the clerks two very brief amendments that could come forward as a single amendment, to the recommendations, both the first and the second recommendation, and it does have a second, or Councillor Stroud has seconded it. If we could...
Could we just get that up on the screen?
Put that up on the screen, and then I'll speak to it very quickly.
Okay, so we have a motion to amend?
Yes, so the first paragraph recommend is including nodes and corridors and shall define clear criteria for areas in transition and stable areas. And that just clarifies the question that I just asked, and I did mention, share this with staff, and I believe that they're comfortable with this amendment going forward.
Okay, so, thank you, Councillor Neil. So, there is a motion to amend on the floor. Is there anything else you wish to say to it?
No, are both of them on the floor at this time? So, I will speak to the rationale for the second one as well.
Okay, so you have the floor.
And that's the second paragraph recommend, and the intent of that, I think, is clearly what is stated here as well. But sometimes when things are in the body of a report but not in the recommend clause, it doesn't firmly place it. And so, instead of the second recommend clause, which is kind of a blank check saying, "We may ask the consultant, we may request other criteria to be considered," this is just adding the clause, it being understood that additional work should reflect input from any statutory public meeting held in compliance with the Planning Act and the Official Plan Review. So, that means that the public input will have full consideration by staff. And again, I believe staff are comfortable with this wording.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendments? Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, so I'll just represent the things that I'm hearing from the community that suggested, that gave Councillor Neil the idea that I fully support to add this language. There was some confusion about the purpose of the meeting on February 23rd, but it was always my understanding that regardless of how many public meetings we have, whether at planning committee or special meetings of council, ones that are statutory or not, the end result is, the purpose is to have the official plan changed and updated to reflect what the community wants to see. And, you know, that's the democratic process. So, really, it's just a way of spelling it out a little bit clearer in the recommendation. Like Councillor Neil said, some of it's already in the body of the report for the second amendment. The first one is quite crucial because this has come up before, and people in the community are feeling very frustrated that they can't predict what might happen when there's a development in their area because they consider their area a neighbourhood, a stable neighbourhood or a stable area, but it may not be. And so, helpful if those things were better defined, and I understand that's what the nodes and corridors concept is supposed to inform, hearing the comment from Mr Newman. So, really, it's all to get to the end result that everybody wants, which is that their concerns, concerns of the folks in the community are being reflected in the official plan review process, and also, they'll know a little bit better how to expect development in their area if they know they're in an area in transition. Also, in the real estate business, people will know it's an area in transition because of the definitions that have been added as a result of this work. So, I think it's all really, really positive, and I'm happy that staff is comfortable with the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Councillor Camden.
Thank you, through your worship. I guess I'm gonna make a couple of comments, and maybe staff can correct me if I'm incorrect in that. Obviously, in my day job, I'm in real estate, and people sometimes will tell me, you know, I'll look into somebody's backyard that backs onto green space, and they'll say, "What could potentially be developed there?" My response is, currently, it is zoned for this, but it could be the CN Tower if things change. So, even if things are in the official plan, or certain things are lined up to shape up a certain way, I feel like, even though we're trying to convey a message to the community that this is what we're focusing on, and this is the way we'd like to see things pan out, it is always subject to change because somebody may come in and say, "I'd like to do this," and it may be something that nobody's ever thought of before. So, although I do agree with the reasoning behind it, it is important to always tell people that even though our official plan says this, or things are looking as though this is the way we want to do things, they are always subject to change. Am I correct in making those kind of statements?
Mr Newman.
Yes, through your Mayor Patterson. So, the nodes and corridors idea would never preclude someone from being able to apply for a Planning Act application of rezoning on a property that might exist outside of a defined node or corridor, so that's correct.
Okay, so I just wanted to, I guess the messaging that we should say from councils that we're trying to shape, you know, we're trying to have a vision for the future, but it's certainly written in pencil, and it can be changed, and we can't make any promises, but we're doing the best we can to make sure that vision happens a certain way, but we can't guarantee it.
Thank you. Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I guess this is a question, and since we're considering these two amendments together, this is where my query is coming from. It could, okay, so assuming the definition of an area in transition or a stable area is something that is done through planning processes, or definitions in place that determine what the distinction is here, do staff interpret the second portion, the second amendment, as meaning that discussions at a public meeting could then redefine an area according to the public input? Or do you see this as including, just in a broad sense, public input on the general planning or official plan decisions in this case?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr Mayor. So, I think the way that we understand it is broader, so not necessarily related to the first item in terms of the corridor and nodes, but if other significant concerns or public issues were raised through the process, and I think it's important to understand that this report not only covers the official plan process, but also speaks to the comprehensive zoning bylaw, which is something that we've started, but we know is gonna take more time. So, there could be other public concerns raised through that process that we might actually also want to look into and work on. So, we are reading into this as being broader than just the nodes and corridors.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Councillor Hutchison.
I have a couple of questions. When we do this, along with the criteria for areas in transition and stable areas, one of the concepts that's sort of bedevilled us is the question of whether we're gonna have a definition for intensification, and perhaps as importantly, what forms of intensification will be entertained. And so, I'm wondering, this comes up in page eight of 11, and it talks about the nodes and corridors and various aspects that are going to be considered. So, will we have a definition of intensification, and will we be addressing forms of intensification?
Mr Newman.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So, with respect to the first question, will we have a definition of intensification? I think we can very easily incorporate a definition of intensification into the official plan. I think the bigger question is the second question as to what form does that intensification take? I think that's the question of great importance and concern and interest to the public today. So, we can define node or a node or a corridor as part of a preliminary review, which is what we're proposing as part of the official plan update that's ongoing today, is to do some high-level criteria and to identify at a very high level areas that we consider to be candidate nodes or corridors. And then, a process separate from the official plan update would be a very detailed analysis of what that intensification might look like within a specific node or a corridor. So, that's a separate process, and you almost have to treat it as a separate process to allow you to do the technical review that's required for defendability in the event that a member of the public wishes to sort of question it at the Ontario Municipal Board. So, there's a two-step process that we're proposing here. The first is to implement high-level enabling policies that will allow us to do the technical review as a separate process, and I think the separate process is also good because it'll allow the public a separate opportunity to provide meaningful input.
Fair enough. I think my question, perhaps was not entirely clear. What I was aiming at more was whether the official plan will point to different types of intensification and the results that might be expected from them. For numbers of people, high-rise is the only kind of intensification they can think of. But clearly, if you look at cities across the world, there are different types of form that allow for intensification that are even greater than anything we've entertained so far, but are more a matter of mid-rise rather than high-rise. That's what I was getting at, whether we'll be saying, you know, we can do this, but we could also do this and get the same results. There seems to be some need for guidance or expanding the view of this. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Mr Newman.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So, the level of specificity that we can get to as part of the official plan update at this time would have to be very high level. But once you do the technical analysis and you start to test some of the build-out potential, and you look at compatibility and servicing capacity and whether or not it makes sense with respect to feeding into a public transit route, once you've done that exercise, you can get into a little more detail about where you might support a medium form of density or a higher form of density and the built form that that might take. But without doing the technical review of that, I think we'd be really subject to criticism and appeal at the Ontario Municipal Board.
Since we're talking...
So, I've tried to provide a little bit of leeway here, but I am just gonna ask that we focus just on the amendment. Not to say that these aren't great questions and great discussion to have, but that will come at a later point. This is just on the amendment, including nodes and corridors and areas in transition stable areas, so we can just try to focus on that, please.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, seeing nobody else wishes to speak, Councillor Neil, you have the last one.
Yes, just very quickly, areas in transition and stable neighbourhoods were a fairly contentious thing on a couple of developments that came forward in the last term of council. And I know that the Planning Act speaks to certain aspects of areas in transition, but there were a couple of spot zoning applications that came forward where the first time people in the neighbourhoods were aware that they were in an area of transition was when it was identified in the planning proposal that came forward. And I think if this passes, the nodes and corridors, areas in transition, stable neighbourhoods will be more clearly defined so that it won't just catch people unawares. So, I think this is a very, very important aspect of proposal for the new official plan. I will ask, and perhaps there hasn't been a lot of thought put towards this, but at a future date, will there be mapping that would allow, if I were a developer, to see that this property is for sale and therefore it is? As I understand, areas in transition should be defined, but everything else, by default, is a stable neighbourhood. Is that accurate?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr Mayor. So, if the question is in terms of if somebody was to purchase a property, would there be any kind of information available in terms of the designation? So, part of the official plan obviously would define areas of nodes and corridors and stable neighbourhoods as well. So, typically, anybody interested in purchasing a property would have access to information on official plan designations as well as zoning, so that in large part should give them an idea of what they can build without any amendments, or what they need to do, what kind of amendments they may require if they want to build something that's not allowed based on the designation or the zoning.
And I take it from your answer that if I were to purchase a property, it isn't identified as an area in transition, but I wanted to argue that it was. If we establish firm criteria, there would be a process to go through before I would have by right the right to intensify because otherwise it's a stable neighbourhood. Is that... Am I making sense? I don't always, but is that a sensible comment?
Mr Newman.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. I may be off here, but right now, the city doesn't delineate a stable area versus an area in transition. There's a policy framework that allows for a series of tests to be reviewed, and those tests are undertaken, they're reviewed as part of a zoning bylaw amendment application in most cases. So, the idea behind the nodes and corridors concept would be that we do delineate specific areas where growth and intensification would be directed, and we would even potentially prescribe general parameters as to what that built form might look like, and instill the specifics in the underlying zoning bylaw. And by virtue of doing that, by defining a node or a corridor, everything else is by default considered perhaps a stable area.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote, first of all, on the motion to amend. Please vote. And that carries on the motion as amended. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just a quick question, I was looking at the parking study, part of the report, and I just wanted to know if, as part of that study, we would be looking at cash-in-lou and our cash-in-lou policies as part of that? So, a quick clarification on that would be great.
Mr Newman.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. No, so the cash-in-lou parking is being undertaken through a separate process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on the motion as amended. And that carries. Item B, Contract Extension, Extendicare Canada. Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is that the report shows that there's been significant improvements. I had Rita Crest about five years ago, he couldn't say that, really. And so, thank you to staff for that. In particular, the cost has stabilised, volunteers are up by more than twice, and the satisfaction of staff has risen by, well, at least 20%, so these are all good things. It's more difficult to tell just where we are with the risk indicators from the report itself, and so, after speaking to staff, I thought they'd like an opportunity to perhaps say something about this, because some of them are dropping, like, these physical restraints, but that's related to falls as well, which has risen. And so, those are always, some of these are areas of not so much concern as, in a sense of something going wrong, but more concerned about having to monitor them. So, I would just like to ask staff to explain what some of these numbers actually mean in the context of the whole operation.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the councillor for the comments around the improvements, and I think that's been a lot of team work, so at all levels of staff, and we appreciate that. In terms of the risk indicators, I think, I mean, you're correct to say that's only part of the information that you have in front of you in terms of, there's more information behind these numbers. These numbers are reported quarterly to the Board of Management and also to the ministry. So, one thing that I do want to point out is the numbers that you have in front of you compare Rita Crest to the provincial average as well as the southeast Lynn average. And what you probably can tell is most of the areas in terms of the risk indicators have been declining at Rita Crest since the first quarter of 2014 that they've been tracked, so I think that's a very positive sign. I would also like to clarify that a number of areas, Rita Crest is lower than our colleagues in terms of southeast Lynn. The area of falls are a little bit higher than what we're seeing across the province and the Lynn. Part of the reason for that is because, as many of you are aware, Rita Crest is a very large facility, and a resident going from point A to point B, there's a larger or more distance to cover, so we appreciate that. Rita Crest also has a very proactive program in terms of falls. So, it's one thing to track the falls, but then what we also do is we track any potential injuries resulting from these falls. So, we do have a program where we have hip protectors in place, we have mats in place, because obviously we want people to try to be as mobile as possible. And in the last quarter, out of all falls, there's only... all falls, there's only one incidence that we've noted, a potential injury that could have been as a result of a fall. So, we can't, I, I want to make sure council is clear that this percentage doesn't mean that as anybody that has actually fallen has been injured, which is not, not the case. In terms of, there are some stats where we don't yet have the provincial and southeast Linn information averages on your, on page seven of eight of the report. But I think overall, the numbers are demonstrating that Rita Crest is progressing very well, and we obviously are looking forward to continue with that momentum.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd also like to compliment the management team for Rita Crest for some of the obvious improvements. It's all in the report, but for example, number of volunteers has gone from 60 in 2013 to 128 in 2015, more than double, the number of volunteers. The satisfaction rate of staff, which was at a sort of a questionable level of 64% in 2013, is, has risen to 76%. Still room for improvement, but that's a significant increase. And also, in most of the risk indicators, the Rita Crest is, they're measurable, the statistic is lower than the southeast Linn region that we are in on almost every occasion. My question would be around the obvious advantages of having a competent management team. If, if maybe the commission could just explain what it is, why it's so important to have this level of expertise in the management of the home for the city for a facility of this type. I mean, I kind of know the answer because I'm a registered nurse, but if you could just sort of explain it to the public, what, why is it so crucial to have an experienced management team in this situation?
Mr. Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, in terms of the management team, I mean, we need to have a team, obviously, that, that not only works together, but is very knowledgeable in terms of the care to the residents. You know, often people will assume that long-term care is, is, is a place where you have older adults going that are still fairly mobile, but just need some additional support for meals and things like that, which is not the case at all. Long-term care does require a lot of health care, direct health care from nurses and also a number of other staff that we have in the homes. So, we currently have a management team that's led by an administrator that is under contract. So, the administrator is an Extendicare employee and is provided through this administration contract. And as we've seen the progress and the stability at Rita Crest, we obviously feel that it's important to continue in that, in that direction. And obviously, a change at this point in administrator, I believe, would have a significant impact in terms of that stability and the foundation that's been built.
So, you could sum it up by, by saying that it would be a bit of a gamble to change horses at this time of, in, in the race at the three-year point of the current management contract. Thanks.
Okay, so we will call the vote on item B. And that carries. Item C, Electric Vehicle Chargers Ontario Infrastructure Grant Program. Counsel Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. I want to applaud staff for bringing this forward and being on point and seeing this program and pursuing it. The, what question is, is when we, given that we get the money, okay, we get a proposal, will the proposal come back to council for approval? It wasn't entirely clear to me whether that was the case or not.
Mr. McClatchy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To be clear, the city is not a, is not applying for grant money. We're participating in a consortium bid. So, we would receive, in the case of Plug and Drive, we would, we would be the host, and Plug and Drive would operate the equipment. And in the case of ChargePoint, we would become the owner-operator of the equipment that would be donated by ChargePoint to us. It's, it's a bit convoluted, but we wouldn't receive money per se. If, if a bid that involves the city is, is successful, then there are agreements that have to be made between the city as a host or an owner, at which point those agreements would be subject to council approval.
Thank you.
To answer your question, yes.
Yes, that answered the question I was, the answer I was hoping for. Just a technical question. When I was reading this, you have competing companies with different formats how to deliver the service. And it was indicated here that the Tesla cars have their own plug. So, it made me think of trains and the problems of the 19th and early 20th century with the gauge of rail lines, and what a mess we had in Ca- in Canada at the time because all the rails didn't suit all the cars, railway cars and vice versa. Is there something in place here as a province trying to do something to make sure that, you know, all the fixtures that we might either have put in place or we put in place will actually be adaptable each to the other so that we're not wishing we had done, like, a year from now something then ten years later wish to heck we'd follow a different course?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. McCauley from Utilities Kingston to field that one, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the electric vehicle charging space is an interesting, interesting space right now. Your question is a good one. The, the reality is that Tesla's really the only company right now that's, that's made their own, their own plug. The remainder of the manufacturers at this point have agreed on a standard. So, at this point, it looks like it's a pretty good bet that if, if we install charging infrastructure or have charging infrastructure installed in Kingston, it's going to be good for the majority of, of the vehicles in the marketplace.
Okay, that, fair enough. It sounds a little bit incoherent in terms of the marketplace, but that's because there isn't a marketplace really there as of yet. Okay, so, thank you for your, the best you could do. Thanks.
Counsel Turner?
Thank you, and through you, Mayor. A quick question. I, I love this report. I think this is great, and I, I really support this. I think it's great for sustainability and to have electric cars come through and to increase electric, electric cars. My question is, is in terms of other stations that support electric cars, is there other places like Belleville, Trenton, Coburg that offer this as well? Or would we be exclusive? Like, would it be Toronto, Kingston, Montreal?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. So, the, the consortiums that we're working with, both ChargePoint and Plug and Drive, they've been working to get communities along the 401 corridor, effectively from Windsor to, towards Brockville, in fact, Brockville and Cornwall. So, it won't be that we'll be on our own, you know, little island in Kingston. The idea and the plan is that there, there will be a, a province-wide infrastructure, focused predominantly on the 401 corridor.
Great. Okay, well, that, that's a great idea. And I like how it would, if, if you put it into the Invissa, that would support businesses around there of cars traveling through off the 401. So, I think it's great. Thank you very much.
Counsel Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you. I just wanted to also thank staff for bringing this forward in a time-sensitive manner. We have had conversations about GHG gases here and how our city's bad. We, one of the ways that we've been talking about is transit and how transit can help us get cars off the road. But another thing that we can do is encourage people to move to cars that don't emit emissions. And by having infrastructure to help people charge their cars when they're downtown or at different parts of the city will help encourage our city to adopt an emission-free lifestyle. And so, I applaud staff for bringing this forward because it's in line with a lot of the direction of greening our city that we've provided. And I really hope that, I like one of the consortium bids better than the other, so I hope that one goes through. But, you know, I won't say which because I'll support both. Thanks.
Okay, so we will call the vote on item C. And that carries. Report number 26 from Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. It's my pleasure to present report number 26 from the Planning Committee. Ask that it be received and adopted. Thank you.
Moved by Counsel Schell, seconded by Counsel Neil. That report number 26 from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So, there is just the one item, approval of an application for final plan of condominium, 1329 to 1383 Gardner's Road. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 27 from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Thank you, Your Worship. I rise now to present the report from the EITP Committee, moved and seconded, and ask that it be received and adopted.
Moved by Counsel Stroud, seconded by Counsel Allen. That report number 27 from the Environment Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So, there are two items. Item one is the updated storm water, stormwater quality education and program, Fish and Frogs Forever suggested program modifications. Item two is the review of best practices for disposing pharmaceuticals. We will call the vote. And that carries. Nothing from Committee of the Whole tonight. There are two information reports. Just raise your hand if you have any questions about them. Number one is the 2015 Q4 report on agreements executed under delegated approval and signing authority. Number two is a Center 70 cell tower addition of Rogers and Wind Mobile. Counsel Ossanik.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I threw you a question to staff. I understand the benefits of co-locating carriers onto one cellphone tower. That makes total sense, especially when it's in a non-controversial location. But when this tower came to Planning Committee, there were residents that went to Planning Committee that night because they were concerned that it was located right across Days, Days Road from a school. And so, I just wondered if staff know if when you co-locate carriers onto a tower, does that double the amount of radiation or does it, like, increase the amount of radiation at all from the tower? Do you know? And if you don't know, that's fine. But I know that council did do a motion about cell towers, and that final report is still to come to council. So, I just wondered if we don't know, because I tried to Google that and I couldn't find much information, if that could just be included in the report. And for all those other municipalities that the city's looking as comparators, if we could see if other cities are grappling with that as well. I do know, so that's my question to staff.
Okay, so maybe I'll just, yes, Commissioner Beech?
So, the report is here tonight to inform council because once we locate a cell tower, there's a requirement through Industry Canada that we co-locate other sources as well. So, it's not here to, for approval for those other. We certainly can look at providing further information on that. We wanted to be transparent in terms of the requirement for us to, when we have a cell tower somewhere, they, they want, rather than building new cell towers in other locations, to co-locate other. But I will certainly get back with further information when the report goes through Planning.
Commissioner Hurdle?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to maybe add to what Commissioner Beech already indicated, we are working on a report to come back, and, and we know this was a motion of council. So, we anticipate that it will be coming back in the next few months. So, we have been working on it, and we will be working to try to incorporate as much information as we can on, on those particular concerns.
Great. Can I make one comment? No, I guess not, either.
No, unless you can phrase it as a question, then no.
No. No, I just heard from the industry that concern, you know, that it does start to accumulate. And so, if staff can find out any information.
So, I, so I think the staff have noted that, and we'll wait for that in the report. Thank you. Okay, no information reports from members of, oh, Counsel McLaren.
And I'd like to congratulate staff on finding some new non-tax revenue from, from cellphone towers. And I'm glad to see that there is in fact a market for this, and I hope they will consider that when the next one comes around. Thank you.
Thank you. Information reports from members of council? There are none. You have to phrase that in a question, Counsel McLaren, so keep that in mind, keep that in mind for next time. Miscellaneous business, there's one motion of council required that, as requested by Kingston-Frontenac Public Library, council proclaim February 24th, 2016 as Pink Shirt Day in the City of Kingston. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel Turner. Remember to wear your pink shirt February the 24th. Counsel Neil, did you want to speak to this?
Just very quickly, I think for our February 23rd council, special council meeting, we should wear our pink shirts.
So noted. And that, that carries. There are no new motions tonight. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk asks for minutes.
Moved by Counsel Ossanik, seconded by Counsel Bohm, that the minutes of City Council Meeting, number 2016 dash four, held Tuesday, January 26, 2016, be confirmed.
Counsel Stroud will just need you to vote on the minutes. And that carries. There's some tabling of documents and a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, I will ask for bylaws.
Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counsel McLaren, that bylaws one and two be given their first and second reading.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by Counsel Allen, seconded by Counsel McLaren, that bylaw two be given its third reading.
Please vote. That carries. The good news is it's 8:19. The bad news is that we're back here tomorrow at 6:00. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Counsel Holland, seconded by Counsel Neil. Please vote. And that carries. Thank you very much.